I'm gonna stand up already, this is... Okay, let's call Amin to order. It's Tuesday, February 26, 2019. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wonderful. Commissioner reports received.
(laughing).
How you all on my phone?
I did this bad. No.
I still want my own menu.
Okay. Commissioner Committee Liaison Reports. I'm coming in some events.
My phone's still ringing, I don't know how to get out of this. It's gonna be one of those days. I think we'll, I don't think we've got to Eastside Business Association meeting Friday morning. You know, Lincoln University has a few games, home games this week. Blair Oaks Project graduation chicken dinner Sunday at the Lion Club. I'll have a set of boards out there, you can go out there and bid on. Get you a Blair Oaks set, Sam. I think that's it.
We've got RPC meeting tomorrow, 11:30 National. Central Missouri Community Action Meeting Thursday at 6:00.
That's it?
Yep.
Tonight I got a USS Missouri Committee meeting, but that's gonna involve some alcohol, so that's okay. Wednesday morning at 8:30, we're gonna have a Cole County Day at the Springfield Cardinals Meeting at 8:30. Kristen's gonna be there, right? Yeah.
What's the date on that?
It's gonna be Saturday, June 15. And we're gonna take whatever profits we make, and that's gonna go towards United Way. So, I want the Health Department to have their own bus. I want the Sheriff's Department to have their own bus.
Bring us a jail bus.
(laughing).
Well, Linda and I did a bus last time. Jeff will have a bus. Thursday mornings, a Bicentennial meeting at 9:00 AM. And then Thursday afternoon, I get to introduce Governor Parson. He's speaking on their highway bonds. Thursday night, Cap Region Medical Center Employee Awards Dinner. Sunday, Operation Bugle Boy Dinner. Next week. That's all I got. Bids and contracts. Sole Source Discussion Approval for 2019-SS05 Taser Conducted Energy Weapons.
I had sent you guys the form that they filled out, kind of explaining what it was all about, and it ran in the paper uncontested, so we're looking for approval today. Any questions on the product itself, obviously, can go to the Sheriff's Department.
Has Jeff tested it?
Will you make that happen?
Alrighty, win. Don't be froggy today. Do I have to be running from you or anything?
Sure.
I don't run, though. It's a bad thing.
So it's just for, it's like a sole source?
Approval of the sole source.
I move that we approve the sole source for the taser-conducting energy weapons.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
2019-SS06 Priority Dispatch Expert Review of Cases.
Same deal. I had sent this to you guys for review before I ran it. It did run uncontested, and so we're here today for the approval. Matt and Stephen, can you answer any questions you might have about that? The product itself?
Four minutes.
We didn't ask any questions yet.
There might not be any.
Got any questions? This is just for the dispatch review, to make sure that it's applicable for the national standards of EMD dispatching.
You guys good?
Yeah.
Four seconds.
And that one, I do have a quote in there, if you could approve that also.
Q plus.
I think I teach you guys penmanship.
So, the quote is for the purchase?
For the agreement, yeah. It's a one-year agreement.
And it's in the budget? It's budgeted already?
So, I'm, go ahead and move the, we approve the sole source advertisement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So, we didn't approve the signing of the quote, so... Not that I don't wanna approve it, I just, how's that typically do? Are we awarding that contract, or is this a service agreement, or... Just a little confused here.
Alls it is, is the quote they provided, and then I just put signature lines on it. It's just expert case review and reporting. And that's what's reflected under the product name.
Okay. Kristen, what do you need? Sign the quote? Sign the agreement?
Cause I'll be issuing a P.
I've got a spot for her on there, too, so...
Okay. You got it there?
Yeah.
I move that we sign the agreement with Q-plus, National Q Services for EMD.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public Works Cooperative Procurement Purchase Approvals.
One, this is accurate for just one complete unit. Tractor's been bought off of MODO contract, and the boom more itself is off of Sourcewell contract. We do have these in our budget for this current year. We're actually, just bringing, we always bring these to the commission, just for y'all's knowledge and for your approval on them, before we purchase them.
So is this a negotiated price with these vendors, or...
Yeah, well, both of them are off of either a MODO contract...
They're both cooperative procurement.
Cooperative procurement off Sourcewell.
So we're buying two?
Yes. And the two existing ones we have now, as soon as those units come in, then we'll perk the way those off.
So I guess I'm gonna ask this another way. Since we're buying two, did we get them to do better than the cooperative price on the contract?
Did we get them to do better? I don't, no.
No.
Probably not. I know the governmental pricing like through MODO, and that was usually about as low as what they'll go on any other, I don't know about the Sourcewell one so much.
I'd like to table it for a week, see if we can work on them a little bit more.
Where else would we get them from? I mean, we got somebody here local, too. If we did bid it, would they be able to touch it?
The actual boom more itself, the thing that closest one is maybe what actually does anything at all with Alamo, the siding stricker. These actually tractors will be shipped straight to Alamo, and these boom more will be put on in Texas, and then the tractors will be shipped back to us.
Okay. You just gonna look into it, and we'll just do it next week?
I'll take that. I'm fine with tableing it.
Yeah, I mean, is there a problem with that, or...
Not for the boom more's now, huh?
I mean, you talking about just the boom more, or tractor and a boom more?
Well, I remember buying two of each, so... I just know that typically, we've been able to get pricing for less than, less than that at times, so... Anyway, especially when you're buying two, but...
I mean, it don't hurt to ask.
Right.
I mean, even if we bid it out, is there anybody else gonna touch that?
Um, sometimes you never know. Sometimes you can get it cheaper, sometimes you may pay more, so, but...
But you can always fall back on these if you do bid it, right?
Right. Yep.
Worst thing that could happen is we just go back to them, but yeah, just see what you can figure out.
Okay.
Okay. Table that. Public Works Bit Awards, 2019-07 Coal Milling and Asphalt Paving Services.
So we skipped the one on accident with the 19,000 chassis bed and hydraulics.
Oh, okay, sorry about that.
So it's just the chassis?
This is just the chassis, yes.
Okay.
Now, you know, last year we bid a Dodge truck, of which they cut us off of the build on the backside of. So I've been chasing these around to find somebody that actually can build one, and Moccans has had a few build dates left to build a 19-5 GBD chassis, which will be just, I'm just ordering the chassis now, I'll be either bidding or buying the rest of the equipment off of Sourcewell, you know. And we hadn't originally had a buckle in our budget for this last year, but with the snow removal, the way it's been this year, and as much trouble as we've had with trucks breaking down, we've decided to remove that buckle from our thing and actually do two of these. One of these will be purchased out of our 2008 budget, that was PO'd already, and the other one will be purchased out of our money from this year's budget.
There's limited supply on these?
Yes.
Limited supply?
Yes.
So I'd move that we approve these. Trucks are in short supply right now. You guys good? I move that we approve the purchase of two Ford F-I-50s.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
2019-07 Coal Milling and Asphalt Paving Services.
You guys should have the bid tab attached. Basically, you can look at the pricing that was submitted. We got your responses. The recommendation is for the lowest bidder with availability.
My computer's not working.
No.
Yeah, Jefferson's quite a bit of difference on that.
Mm-hmm, there is.
Usually not that much.
I move that we approve the coal milling asphalt paving service to the lowest, lowest with availability.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
2019-08 Pipes.
We received responses for the pipes. We got three back. The recommendation is for the lowest and best in each category with available material. That said, we didn't get any bids for concrete pipes again, so we'll probably have to put that back up for a bid.
What's the deal with the concrete pipes?
It's been an ongoing issue over the years. I don't know.
I don't know what the... When it was one company, they had a problem with it. Now that one's has sold and been moved to another company, and I'm not sure why they didn't bid, because last time I talked to them, they were convinced they were gonna bid on them.
And it hasn't been an issue the last couple of years, so it's probably just something that slipped through the cracks, I would guess, so...
Is there typically only one company that'll bid the concrete pipes?
Who'd you say bought BECO?
Fred Weber bought BECO out. There's another one in Springfield, which I'm surprised they didn't turn in a bid either this time, so...
They haven't, who's that? The, they haven't for the last couple of years.
Several years they haven't. We've always, it always seems like we end up putting it back out to bid a second time and hard to get a bid on, so...
Can we call them both up and ask for a price list and let that count as their bid?
I...
So we didn't get any bids for concrete pipes, and then Chris wanted to know if we could call the two providers that have provided in the past and get a price list, if that would count.
I think you probably can, since it's requirement to go out to...
Competitively bid.
Competitively bid, and no one bids, so at this point, you can go out to vendors and request.
Pricing for what we need?
I guess we don't do much with it.
I don't have a problem with that.
We don't do much concrete pipe, or we do?
No, we do. We're using more and more of it all the time, especially on BECO roads.
Anything that gets upgraded, always gets concrete under more. I mean, basically, it should be a hundred-year pipe. I mean, we should never have to replace those, so...
I'd just like to see you try and get a couple prices if you're buying it, so...
Is there nobody around here doing it?
The closest one's in Fulton, which used to be BECO, and now it's that Fred Weber actually bought them out of St. Louis, so...
I move that we award pipes to lowest and best in each category with available materials.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
2019-09 Glass Beads.
We received two responses on the beads. The recommendation is for the lowest bid, Enus Paint, at 27,200.
So we're gonna award the Enus Paint? I move that we award glass beads to Enus Paint.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
2019-10 Sign Materials.
We received four responses. One did not fill out their bid form properly, so I rejected that one. So with the three remaining, the recommendation is for the lowest and best in each category with available material.
I move that we award to the lowest and best in each category with available materials for the signed materials.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
2019-11 Paint Materials.
Allstate's coating was the lowest of the four bid responses received at $73,715, and the recommendation is to award to Allstate's contingent on successful MODO testing.
The computer sucks. I move that we award to Allstate contingent upon successful MODO testing for paint materials.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
2019-12 Asphalt Materials.
We received two bids for the asphalt materials, and the recommendation is to award to the lowest bidder in each category with availability.
There's anything on that, it's not attached.
I would've printed more if I would've known your guys' thing was gonna be down. Sorry about that.
This one just wasn't attached, so...
Oh.
You're slipping.
What happened? Debbie's gone, we just...
Things are going to...
Drink.
What was the recommendation?
Lowest bidder with availability.
Lowest bidder in each category with availability, right.
I move that we award asphalt materials to the lowest bidder in each category with available materials.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Off-System Bridge Program Agreement for Old Forge Road Bridge Replacement.
This is a standard agreement that we signed with MODO when we do a BRO project. It's been awesome, we've done one. We've set it up for 500,000, that'd be 80,000 reimbursement, and the, it'd be 80% reimbursement, 20% would be our share, so the agreement's here. We have signed this before we move forward with contacting an engineering firm, this between us and MODO to make sure that we follow all the procedures and stuff for BRO funding. Jill has reviewed and signed it. Good, Joe?
Yeah.
I move that we approve and sign the agreement for Old Forge Road Bridge Replacement with MODO.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have any unfinished business? No? New business, Accounts Payable Review.
I asked to approve the accounts payable at our current level.
I move that we approve Accounts Payable Pending Review.
Second.
Oh, I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Treasurer's Office to Discuss County Investments. Mr. Eric?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Good morning, gentlemen, how are you all doing?
Good.
Hi, Eric, hi, Mark.
We're here to make a presentation on the county's investment portfolio. As we talked last time we were here, we were going to be in a better position to know how much excess funds could be invested after the collector had turned over the county's portion of the property tax revenues, and so that's where we are right now. If you look at the first handout, which is not for the complete month, but through the 26th of February today, you'll notice there's $4 million in outstanding investments with varying maturity dates, which is, of course, what we all wanted when we set up our investment policy, was to pursue what we call a structured or ladder portfolio, where you have differing maturity dates. You have notes and bills of different durations, so that you can spread your risk over time, whether rates are going up, interest rates, whether they're going up or whether they're going down. You don't get boxed in by either going out just long-term or just short-term, you spread it out over time. You wanna notice that the very first general revenue note, which was long-term when we bought it last year, of a million dollars matures in two days, so that 4 million down at the bottom that we actually have invested now will be 3 million in two days. And if you look at the next handout, any questions on the first handout?
Nope.
The second handout, all that Mark is applying the math that he presents to you all each time we come before you, to arrive at the figure on how much, how many, how much excess funds we have to invest. Go ahead, Mark.
Well, as of yesterday, I did this yesterday, we have about 35.7 million in the bank under our control, and then another 1.5 million under, in other accounts, with the sheriff, the courts, prosecutor, I think, are the three. Where that other 1.5, that additional 1.5 million, that number hasn't changed in a while. That number stays pretty consistent, that cash in the bank, under, under the control of other officials. Then I added in the, the investment, the million that we're gonna get in, back in two days, that's maturing. I'm trying to be a little more detailed, I'm trying to tweak in this as I go to provide a little more detail, but in about a week, we'll have another 1.9, 2 million in the bank from our sales tax, our monthly sales tax receipt. So, and then after that, I subtract some for allowances, for payroll, and other, paying other expenses. I know Kristen and I just talked about how maybe I could, maybe these numbers are a little off, but, but I think we both agreed that as of now, that 38 million is like the average of cash that we would have available in the bank for the next 30 days, which means we would, would recommend to invest 4 million of that to get down to the 34 million threshold, which, like Eric, Eric has explained many times, any, any money in the bank over 34 million earns .25 percent. Basically, it's earning almost nothing, so it, it's definitely to our advantage to get, get that down to 34 million and invest that money making 2 to 2.5 percent instead of .25 percent, so...
And even if we were to err, let's say, and get it below the 34 million, remember that our 30 to 34 million dollar chunks at the bank earns the three-month Treasury minus 15 basis points, so we're still way ahead. Then if we let it go over 34, which is a mere .25 percent, 25 basis points. So, Mark's done a good job on this, I think, each month, and he's getting more and more accurate, I think, with each time, and we appreciate the input, of course, from our finance officer and our auditor to help him arrive at those figures.
FYI, the sales tax is gonna be late this month, cause this next month, cause they were, Department of Revenue was late in getting the coupon books out, so they've extended, we've already paid ours, but they've extended, so everybody's gonna be late in getting their sales taxes.
So I guess at this point, if you'll flip to your last handout, and I probably should have been providing this in meetings in the past, this, I mean, there is no better authority on the interest rates on which we're making our judgments than just going straight to the Department of the Treasury. And look at those rates. I printed out just the month of February, and it shows you one month, two months, three months, all the way out to what our investment policy that we approved last year allows us to go out three years, which I think all of us have shied away from a full three-year. But let me back up and say that our ladder portfolio approach to minimize risk, rates going up or down, right now, basically, we have a half-year note, a one-year note, and a one-and-a-half-year note. So we're on target right now with the concept of a structured, you know, portfolio, investing our money in bonds going out, various maturity dates, and I'd like to stick with that. And so the 4 million, assuming we're in agreement, that 4 million represents, you know, what, what we have to invest. And so the four million, assuming we're in agreement that four million represents, you know, what, what we have to invest, short and long-term, my recommendation would be to go out at least for two years to continue with our rungs of our ladder. We need to go out two years to about January twenty-twenty-one on a million dollars. And then another million going out, let's say, a year or a year and a half. That, to me, represents, you know, faithfulness to our concept of the structured portfolio. And then two million dollars in thirty-day treasury and ninety-day treasury. And that captures what most of us also want, which is a short-term commitment to allow for any unforeseen expenses. But I think if, I think Mark and I, in listening carefully to you all last time, and listening to Kristen in particular on capital projects, you all have some significant projects coming onboard, which is why out of the four million, we obviously pivot quickly to two million in short-term, a thirty-day and a ninety-day treasury. But then I think that whether it's the courts, related capital projects, or other ones that we've heard you all discuss, going out a year or a year and a half on a million, and two years on an additional million, that, that seems to me to comport with the calendar that you all are going by in terms of when some of these bills will come due, once you all initiate the capital projects. So that's our recommendation, is to go out two million short-term, and then two million longer-term, splitting it either a million for a year and two years, or a million each for a year and a year and a half. If you look at those rates, just as one last comment, there is really no, there's nothing you gain by going out past a year or so because rates are inverted. The longer you go out, one would expect, interest rates would be higher. But the market, you know, and it's, and it's, in its vast wisdom, is projecting that in two years, and in three years, and even four years, and even seven years, that the rate compared today on a, let's say, a six-month bill, that those notes going out that far, rates are not going to continue to go up. Rates, if anything, are going to stay stagnant, and they may even go down depending on what happens with the US economy. So that's why you see those rates not tick up until ten years out. Then the market is saying, it's either so far out we can't predict, or by then, maybe things would have gone down and gone back up. That's my best way of interpreting how those numbers work. But I think last time I tried, I was trying to set the groundwork for all of us to understand that if you, if you start chasing short-term, excuse me, if you look at these rates and you try to, 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 to figure out how much, what rate is the highest rate that we can get our best return on, right now, you'll be chasing short-term rates for quite some time. And so by ignoring going out a year, year and a half, or two years, you run the risk that in one, one and a half, or two years, when you're still chasing those short-term rates, everything is falling. The economy might be in a recession, it might be in a full-blown recession, and that rate that's available to you right now at a year and a half, it won't be that high. It'll be noticeably lower. And so that's why I recommend us to stay, you know, faithful to our ladder portfolio concept at the same time that we balance that with what you all feel comfortable with in terms of your capital projects that you all have on the horizon. And I'll stop there. Mark, do you have any more comments to make?
Eric, I'm a little confused here, maybe, anyway, you talked about two million short-term, thirty-day, two million long-term.
No, two million thirty-day, excuse me, one million thirty-day, one million three months. So two million short-term.
Okay.
And then two million long-term, split either between a year, so a million going out a year or a year and a half, and a million going out two years. If we want to stay with the concept that we all agreed to last year, this is what we have to do. On the other hand, if you want to chase short-term rates that are slightly higher, you can do that, or if you want your capital projects' calendar to determine how we make investments rather than the other way around, which is you let your maturing investments kind of help guide you, or at least have some relevance to when you decide to initiate and start paying for capital projects, that's a decision you all make. We like the idea of, as you all probably do, making sure the two don't get tangled up, and that's why we're splitting the two between short-term and long-term. If we don't go out two years now, when are we going to go out, right? If we're not going to go out a year, a year and a half now, when are we going to go out? We've got a million maturing in two days, we've got an additional three million available to us now. So, so that's kind of our overview of what we need to look at.
I think something else to keep in mind, though, is, like last year, we got to November and December and didn't invest in as much in investments because we get a bulk of our money at the beginning of the year with property taxes. We also have a large debt service payment in law enforcement fund that we make at the end of the year. So we don't usually have as much cash available at the end of the year as we do at the beginning, and I think that's why we've been sticking to some of those shorter-term investments.
Right.
So you may have four available right now, but at the end of the year, you may not have that four available because we make those larger debt service payments, and we're spending down the cash that we got in property taxes, say, in road bridge fund or the assessors fund. We get the bulk of our money in January, and we spend it down as we go through the year.
And in that same year, we have, we have bills maturing. It's not as if that, you know, whatever the amount is, six or seven or eight total, that it stays that way until this time next year. We have something maturing, a million maturing in August. Your point's well taken. I mean, I'm not disagreeing at all, it's just, the portfolio is not, is not static. It doesn't just stay.
Right, right.
So, I mean, we've got the money now, why wouldn't we invest it now? And no one's suggesting we take the four million and go long-term. That's, it doesn't say, go ahead.
We're looking, we're looking at a lot of things we, we need to do, so I wouldn't have any problem with maybe taking this million that's coming due and doing that for one year. And I, I think the other one comes due when? I, I don't know about two years right now. I've got a feeling.
Talking about an additional four million?
To what's on the investment right here, this paper right here, no, an additional three million. A million of that is already invested, it matures in two days. So, so yes, in two days, it'll be four. Right now, it's actually three, but we're, we're recommending what to actually do with the additional one million that matures in two days.
So we started out with three long-term.
Right.
But we knew one was coming due in February, so in January, we gave them the authority to do another million long-term. So we're going to be back down to three long-term.
After this one matures?
Yes.
Okay.
And then we have, so that will leave four available for short-term at the moment. Or, as Eric's suggesting, maybe go out longer with a portion of that.
This is really what we're recommending, is a mirror of what you all did originally, which was you all went out one, one and a half, and two years. We're, now that time has passed, there's no longer a two-year note on the horizon. There is no two-year investment anymore. And so if we don't make the two-year investment, which I think we can, quite confidently, a mere million dollars, given what some of the balances are in some of the different funds, then we are staying faithful to our ladder portfolio concept. If we don't invest that today, are we going to do it next time we meet? Probably not. And the next time, no. I mean, that, actually, Kristen's point is my point. We've got the money now because of this time of the year. Now is the time to commit to a longer-term treasury note of two years. If you don't do it now, the longer you go, you run the risk that the economy goes south, and that two-year, or even one and a half, or even one-year note rate becomes so much less, you kind of kick yourself in the arse for not making the investment when it was available, when you had the money available, and when you had the rate available. And that's why the two million, to me, in short-term, is still an attractive, you know, leg of the portfolio that, that should please the auditor and yourselves, for those of us that want to, to gain the higher short-term rate at the same time, make cash available for whatever, whatever needs we have.
I think you just need to prioritize your capital list and make sure that you're not going to want to reach some of that money in the shorter term.
Well, that's what I kind of worried, because after this long-range planning meeting we had, and looking at, at some of the things we have coming up, I'm, I'm not necessarily comfortable with going with a two-year.
Well, let me say this, and we were in the same meeting and, and came to the same conclusion that you, you all did, which is, there's quite a few things coming down the pipe. But let Mark talk for a minute about something you all haven't heard much about, and that is the outstanding balances. If I can, you and I've had quite a few conversations about the size of the balances in some of the different accounts, you know, speaks to the ability to withstand any sort of unexpected expense, something that comes online sooner than the commission or the auditor might have expected. You, you know what I'm talking about? I mean, like, like every year, we, the last few years, or not every year, but the last three or four years, I've looked at budgets, the, the ending balances, more than fifty percent of annual expenditures, so. Well, that's certainly, that's one point. Is that, is that, is that what you're asking? Is that what your point? I'm actually talking about month-to-month, when we see the size of the balance in the law enforcement account and, and general revenue, and, and the fact that, I mean, we have felt for this whole time that we could invest more than we, than we do. But in order to, you know, corroborate with other offices and to present something that the commission feels comfortable with as well, am I making, am I? No, I agree. Those, the general fund and the law enforcement fund in particular carry forward very fairly sizable balances every year. And the reserve at the end of the year is so sizable that I, I, I think what we're suggesting here shouldn't, shouldn't be, you know, overinterpreted, or, or I guess another way of looking at it is, the capital projects that you all are looking at, it shouldn't make anybody uncomfortable talking about how many projects there are, how expensive they are, how much it's going to cost the county, and then worry that somehow we're going out with a couple of million a couple of years, or within a couple of years, like one, one and a half to two years, that that somehow is going to cramp anybody's style. It's, it's not. It simply is not. If we were talking about quite a bit more money, then, then yes, I think we cross over the line into the auditor's point of view where you run that risk, and who wants to run that risk? No one does. But we're, we're being very, very conservative, and I would ask the auditor, you know, given what our India reserves are, how, how can you feel uncomfortable about us going out and extending our ladder portfolio to the leg we're losing, which is, you know, two years?
Well, so I think that depends on whether or not they decide to spend four million dollars on tearing down the old jail, or something of that nature. They've been building reserves, and we have been, we spent some of it on the health department. They also have a reserve policy in place of what they think those cash balances should be in some of those funds. So it kind of depends on what their future plans are, and how quickly they're going to reach into the pot to spend them on some of those larger items that they're talking about.
I agree.
I mean, the law enforcement fund is the same way. They've had talks about the interstitial layer and things like that. Those are not small projects that are... So it, it, at what point do you decide that you're going to move forward on any of those projects? And that's up to them.
We looked at the calendar, we know when the next judge is going to be elected. That's in twenty-twenty, and that person takes office in twenty-twenty-one. So again, our recommendation, we assume that that's one of the...
That could come to question too, because they said they had it budgeted for this year. They could appoint somebody. Somebody said that, so, I mean, that's, on this four million, we have it all separated out for GR, law enforcement, and health insurance.
Those are the ones that are currently long-term.
Yeah, so if something happens with, say, say, the health insurance, say something stupid happens, that one's in, it's not coming up until two twenty-nine of twenty. What if we had to have it tomorrow? Or, you know, soon, sooner than what that maturity date is? Can we go in and get the million that's under the GR or law enforcement, or those are specifically?
So GR money is unrestricted, so yes, you could take from GR and give to the health insurance fund, but you cannot take from law enforcement at the moment and give it to someone else. So you have to look at the restrictions on the money and where it's at.
So on those, if something happened, we could basically borrow it from GR. Okay.
If I can say this, part of our recommendation, Jeff, is based on, on your question's last meeting about why not go out longer, and I'm not, I'm not placing anything at your feet other than to say that, that we listen to all three of you, and we've listened to Kristen, and we think that we've done a pretty good balancing job, that we can go out and reach, reach and capture the, the returns that are available, at the same time, feel like we're not getting close to somehow compromising your capital improvements project. And let me ask this, is the, in your all's opinion, is the, is the courts' side of capital improvements the next year or two, is that considered like the lion's share, or at least the largest portion of what you all might be expending? Is that a fair, is that a fair characterization of where capital improvement stands right now?
Well, we've got things like HVAC, we've got things like phone system, you know.
We know you have lots of different things, I'm just asking, is, is, is the courts, you know, giving a solution to the new judge and everything with the court, is that not considered kind of like the, the bigger piece of the pie that you all will be expending?
The actual facilities.
Right.
For housing them.
And that's why we, if that is, if the answer is yes, that's why we feel comfortable going out a year, year and a half, and two years on two million dollars, because you'll have, nothing's going to happen in the next six months. No bills are going to be paid probably within a, a one calendar year, excuse me, one year from, from, from today. So you'll have that year, year and a half maturity coming up whenever you do your stuff with the court. And even the two-year probably will be available by, you know, knowing how capital projects work out. I was a commissioner for eight years, I understand sometimes, you know, how long it takes to make a decision, how long it takes to actually get it online, and by the time the bills come, it's quite a ways down the road. And that's why we're not recommending three million on short-term and a million on long-term. That's why we feel comfortable recommending.
Yeah, I wouldn't disagree with that as far as needing, when we would need the money, but you take the health department as an example, that one came up pretty quick, so.
We juggled that one perfectly, though. I give that credit to Mark working with Kristen on the timing of that. We maximized our investment.
Yeah, my point is just that it can happen, it can happen pretty quick.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm looking at, I mean, I think, I think a year is where we're getting the best return. Now, in one year, we're going to get, if we went two years now, and it may be a lot lower, we may kick ourselves in the butt at that time, but I don't know, I'm just thinking closer to a year on it.
So you're thinking a year, another year long-term, and three in short-term?
You'll have, what, August?
You will have one that's...
February of twenty, and June of twenty.
Right, and so now we're, yeah. So now we'll no longer have a two-year rung of the ladder. We're starting...
Some of you did a year and a half, though, now, and then do it one year.
Well, so we just did a year and a half in January.
So you got to do a two-year to, to make it kind of a stepped.
Yeah, if you're wanting to keep it stepped at that.
Right.
So I'm fine with one year. I, I think you can still work with that. Right now, that's where the most money is at on it, but, you know. June, or August, we have our next one come up. We could look at it and do a two-year if we want to, if we see the, you know, rates really turning.
What do you mean by rates really turning? Because rates don't really, they don't really turn... turn, they don't really move up and down like stocks. They're very slow creatures. They're slugs. And so what we're looking at right here is, uh-
So then go a one-year where we're getting the most for one year, and then in a year, they shouldn't have moved much. I had a lot of things we talked about the other day, and if we do end up, you know, buying something somewhere, it's gonna, it's gonna probably happen fairly quick, because if you're going to get another building somewhere to get room for another judge, we're not going to be able to drag our feet on that. That may be something we needed in the next year. So I'm not sure we want to have it tied up.
Well, it's not going to cause us heartburn. If that's how you all want to invest your money, I'm willing to, uh, call the trading desk at Central Bank and buy whatever you guys want to buy. So I think it's a mistake not to go out longer term. Now's the time to do it, because we have the money, and, uh, we don't know what rates are going to be like. Uh, but I'll do whatever you guys want, want the, uh, county dollars to be invested in, so.
I was kind of thinking out loud, so that's where I'm-
Yeah, I'm, I'm probably a little more comfortable right now with one year, just because there is a lot going on. Uh, I'm just-
Well, for the record, I'd like to say I come back in a year and see how many dollars you all have spent, you know, this time next year, see how many dollars you've actually spent, and realize, you know, what we were recommending now, longer term, and you all decide instead to go shorter term. In a year's time, my guess is the amount of money you spend really is, is neither here nor there. And I'm not saying you're not going to spend any money. You guys are. But I'm turn, I'm talking in terms of somehow that we might jeopardize by using our recommended, recommendation, that we somehow are jeopardizing your ability to, to have spent that much money between that and, between now and next year. I just don't see that happening at all. And that's why we're making the recommendation, because we feel comfortable after listening carefully to everybody. But if you all want to say you don't feel comfortable going out more than a year right now, then, I mean-
I don't. I'm, I'm just looking at some of the things that are coming up, and we've got some really big expenses.
Can you tell us what they are and how much they are, and how that somehow what we're trying to squirrel away jeopardizes that, Sam? And can you tell us the money that you're going to be spending? It doesn't even have to be what. Can't you just tell us what, what the, what the amount is and why what we're recommending that to you?
I, I think, I think if you just look at phone systems, if we look at, at a building, uh, you know, in like this, you know, we could end up kind of like the health department where we find something and, and it's, uh, you know, it's a million dollars.
And we don't have the money in general revenue to pay for that? By, by virtue of us taking out a couple of million, that somehow makes that money not available?
I just said I'm, I'm more comfortable with going with the year.
Very good.
But what's, what's to say that we come back in a year and the interest rate's not up more, so we can make more money?
Well, anybody that's following the markets now doesn't believe in a, I mean, that's why I gave you this sheet from the US Treasury. The market is telling you what they think. These are people who do this for a living every day and have done it many times for decades. They're saying they think rates are not going to go up. They think rates are going to go down or stay the same. And that's what the Federal Reserve has said. They had two rates penciled in for two, 2019, and in the last 90 days, they have backed off that and indicated that there'll be no, uh, uh, rate raises in 2019, which is pretty big news. So, right, if a guy wants to go out on a limb and suggest that how do you know rates aren't going to go up, you're right. I mean, no one has a crystal ball. But all indications are from the Federal Reserve, from the market itself, um, is the opposite. That rates are, are going to stagnate now. And then if the economy experiences any sort of serious headwinds, you know, and if things in Germany and China, et cetera, continue to go down, it's going to have an effect on the US economy, and that in turn will have an effect on our rates. They're not going to go up. They're going to stay the same and possibly go down. That's my best interpretation of what's happening right now, but.
Yeah, and if I knew more about it, I'd probably be rich right now.
And we all, yeah.
On this investment stuff. I just, I don't see so much reward for throwing it in a two-year treasury note. Um, you know, looking at March of 18, you know, it was 2.04-
Mm-hmm.
And 2.14. Now we're at 2.55, so.
And that's, I mean, this is the last thing I'll say about it. The idea of a cap, of a ladder portfolio is that since we don't know what rates are going to be in a year or two or three years, or five years, which some, some political jurisdictions go out five years, but we don't. The idea is to spread your risk. Spread your risk. Now, you don't capture, you know, by five or 10 or 15 basis points, a better rate now, you know, just because it's a higher rate at 30 days or 90 days. You go out intentionally and grab a lower rate longer term, because the market is telescoping what they think is going to happen in the future. Rates won't go up. And if you had this sheet a year ago, you would see actually that those rates with each passing year climbed noticeably, because the market was, was telescoping, we think rates are going to go up, which is exactly what happened, which is one of the reasons why I came to you all last year and said, we need to get on this boat, you know, as it sails out of port, which, which we did, and that was a smart move. So again, by not going out two years, uh, you are simply walking away from your commitment to a ladder portfolio. You start chasing shorter term, uh, you, you, you're chasing higher term rates at a short, shorter term duration. And I, I mean, as long as you understand that's, they, you know, that's the bet you're placing, then let's, let's place the bet that way, so.
Do you see the rates changing that much in the next 30 days?
Of course not, no.
So they could in 30 days decide to go out further with a different amount of money? I mean, I don't know that-
But you're all, using your own analysis a while ago, your, your financial position's going to be no richer 30 days from now than it is right now. We've got the money now because the collector turned it over to us. If we don't, so, yeah, I mean, the money's there, why would we wait to invest it? The longer we wait for you all to say, long-term, thumbs up finally, the less chance the money is actually going to be available because of capital projects.
I think you also just laid it on us today that you wanted to go out a year and two years, give us a minute to think about it, and decide what their priorities are and when they want to do them, and maybe they would be on-
We did that 30 days ago at our last meeting. That's what we presented at our last meeting, was the alternative facing us when this matured next month. Last year, we were talking about February the 28th.
Right.
And that was one of the things, the seeds that we planted, was a decision's going to have to be made, acknowledging capital, uh, uh, projects about whether you, you're going to want to commit to longer term. We need to, because we're going to lose rungs of our ladder that go out further. We planted that seed. You're trying to, that's what, we should have given-
We were talking about the million that matured in February, and they did go out another year and a half with the one that matured in February. We did not talk about the one that was maturing in August, because it's not here yet.
We, we, I thought we talked very clearly about the concept of making sure we continue not just to grab the 30-day short-term, but we planted the seeds intentionally. I have notes, uh, in my notes from last time. We were planting the seed about going out even further, because with each passing month, that originally long-term, two-year note is now, is no longer a two-year note. I mean, on paper it is, but what, what's behind it? Right now, there's nothing. I thought we had, we had kind of laid that groundwork. Last time, we were talking about the rates, whether-
Oh, we can tear it every three months, too. It doesn't have to be six months, one year, 18 months, and two years. It can be, excuse me, it can be teared however we want to. So I don't think there's a right or wrong on it, Eric. I don't see that your idea's wrong, or my idea, or Sam's idea's wrong. I mean, there's just different ways to do it. I just prefer the one-year. I'm doing it as a simple creature here, going the 2.55 is the most that we can get right now on the one-year without going past three years. That's what I'm comfortable with. Uh-
Okay.
And if, I mean, I'm just one, though.
No, I'm-
So I don't know.
We're looking, we're looking at April, May, June, July. Are you all going to let us go out two years then? We think the chances then are a lot less than they are today.
We might know better about what we're going to do, whether we're going to do an addition there, when, if we have to go into the courthouse and put in new plumbing, new HVAC, new elevator, new, I mean, you're, you could be talking eight or nine million dollars.
Right.
And so.
The, the ones, and to answer your question on that, Eric, um-
Yeah.
August 31st, the one coming up then.
Yeah.
Is law enforcement.
Right.
And then the next one would, would be the health insurance. I'd almost be more comfortable having those in a long-term note, because you can borrow from general to address something and always pay it back if we need to.
Okay.
But I'm not saying yes or no either way right now.
Right, okay. Well, that might put the onus on us then to, to, when that matures, to reinvest it longer term then, which I hope you guys are willing to do, because that's what we'll need to do. If we don't do it today, then, I mean, at some point, we have to do it.
We're not losing either way. I mean, it's not-
Yeah, it's true. I mean, you're right.
So.
So what we'll, I guess we'll just, uh, kind of regroup here and suggest, uh, $3 million in, uh, I guess split between a 30-day and a three-month treasury. Those are the best rates right now. Um, well, actually, that's not the best rate.
One year is one of them. That's 2.55.
Yeah, I think, I think we're talking about the one that's renewing, right?
Yeah.
I mean-
I thought we were talking about the whole, you've been talking about the whole kit and kaboom, but-
No, we, we, that's why I think we've been confused. We're talking about the one that's renewing, renewing it for one year. Is that right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay. He's talking about another $3 million on top of all this.
Exactly, yeah.
That he's wanting to invest in a 30-year and 90-day, uh, treasury.
Okay.
So I don't think we were on the same page here, so.
Right. Well, my mistake then. So you all want the February 28th maturity to go to another one-year, uh, general revenue, right? And then that leaves $3 million. And you're suggesting none of that goes out two years. All of it goes to either a 30-day or a three-month treasury bill. Is that right?
Okay, where was that extra $3 million coming from, I guess? I missed that part.
The second page that we handed out to you, that Mark walked through his math, um-
Yeah. So that's 38 million on top of the 4 million we have in it?
No, this is, uh, this becomes $3 million in two days, because this matures. So that's actually, it would be $3 million. And then he's actually, Mark has already said, the investment maturing 2/28. So there's $4 million on the table today for us to discuss. You all have already said that the one-year bill-
Four million outside of what we've already invested.
So you have some 30-day investments that just matured, correct?
Uh, about a week ago. Let, let me, can I throw this out?
Where's the 30-day investments at?
They're, they're all back in the bank. We have none right now.
So we don't, we don't have that information here?
It's, it's matured. It's no longer available.
It's matured.
It's in the cash balance.
It's in the cash balance.
Yeah, and it's, it, and its return have been deposited back into the respective account.
Could I say, maybe right now, just look at those first two numbers. As of today or yesterday, we've got 35.7 million in the bank, yeah, under the control of the commission and the treasurer, and another 1.5 that gets added as far as figuring our, our, our interest, uh, those, that money in the sheriffs, the courts. So if you add those two together, as of today or yesterday, we've got 37.2 million dollars in the bank, not even looking at that, uh, 1 million that's maturing in two days. So if you just look at that, we've got $3 million right there to-
Over top of 34 million we want to reserve.
Put in, to put in, to put in maybe a short, yeah, a short term. If you look at it that way. I'm sorry.
I'm trying to figure out where the other three came. So we're still trying to keep it at 34. We had those three in the short-term, one month, two month, or three month?
You have 30-day investments that matured already, plus the additional million that's maturing in two.
Okay.
So they're trying to invest everything over 34?
Okay.
34 to 38 is your point.
That's only making the point 2.5, rather than just making the point 2.5. Okay.
Okay. All right. Yeah, yeah, okay. So we can, uh, put the additional 3 million. You all want the 1 million maturing to be put back into $1 million, uh, general revenue, uh, treasury bill. And so that leaves the $3 million, and, uh, the question there is, uh, looking at the rates and looking at your capital, capital, uh, projects. Uh, do you all want to go out, uh, one month? Uh, or we would recommend splitting it between a one month, between a 30-day bill and a, and three, and a three-month bill.
So then you're on agreement, Kristin, that there is an additional $3 million that we can use on a one, two, three month, or whatever we do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
I'm, I apologize. I didn't follow that part. I-
That's our fault.
I thought we had the one that was maturing, and then we had the other three that were somehow getting talked in there, so. Okay. Um, I have no clue right now. I, I was on a whole different train of thought, just thinking about this $4 million. Um, I mean, I really don't see any reason why you couldn't stagger them on some kind of different-
Right.
Time lines, you know, one month, two month, three month, one year.
Well, there's really nothing to gain in a one, two, three month. I mean, it's such a short-term, the rates are, or, um, you know, I mean, it's easier for all of us to just go ahead and go with either, I mean, decide now to put, out of that $3 million, put part of it in a 30-day note and put part of it in a three-month, uh, bill, excuse me, bills, not notes, and just, you know, let the chips fall where they may. You're only talking about the difference of, uh, you know, two to five basis points, which is like, you know, .02% interest versus, you know, the range is .02% to like .05%. So that's why it's, it's kind of immaterial at this point. So, should we just go ahead and put a million in a 30-day bill and a million, and $2 million in a, a three-month bill? Or vice versa? I don't want to go out too long-term on a three-month. We'll do two, unless there's any objection, we'll do a million on a 30-day. We'll do $2 million on a three-month. And then our next meeting, uh, we'll, we'll schedule with you all when the, uh, when the, uh, August, uh, note matures. And we'll come back in and see if we can't talk to you all into a two-year note.
Is that, is that $3 million, is that all in GR, or where is that? Various funds?
Yeah, it's spread across.
And we always consult with, uh, Kristin on how she wants that split out.
We've been trying to do most of the investments out of GR, so that the bulk of the interest goes back into GR.
So if I needed a million dollars tomorrow, where would I get it from, if you invested all?
You still have money available in GR.
I would just bring the reserve below the 34, I guess that we'd be looking at. So I, I guess, do we want to do it, you're saying 30-day and three-month with $2 million? Do we want to go one, two, three, or two, three, six, and then we come back each time? How much do you want to, have to talk about it, so?
Jeff, I was saying a million for 30 days, $2 million for three months, and then you all wanted a million for a year. That's where we are right now?
Yeah, I was, to reinvest the GR one for the one-year. I think that's where I'd rather go, is keep the GRs and the ones that maybe are a little tied up. Or no, I'm sorry, vice versa. But I'd be all right with it for one year. What other ones do we have then? We'll have some from, some more from law enforcement, health?
I mean, I, there's really not a whole lot of advantage of going even three months, but, I mean, I'm okay with that. I don't think we'll need the money sooner than that. But I would like to see a breakout of where these funds are from. I mean-
I haven't observed.
Okay.
And we'll put that on our next, uh, sheet that we hand out to you all. We'll include that next time, and we'll make it clear about the 34 million, uh, break point, too. Make it a little easier.
Okay.
Are you good?
Does it sound good?
Yep.
We're all on the same page?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry about that. I, I thought I understood what we were talking about, and then- I was on the wrong page.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Thanks, Mark.
Oh, we got one more.
Soil and Water District Court Order.
Yeah.
Do you guys have that agreement?
I have.
Okay.
Thanks, Kristen.
What is this for?
Well, it's.
We always have to sign the agreement with the Soil and Water District every year, Soil Conservation District.
Is that for giving them money or is that the agreement that we're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's just an agreement?
The annual agreement that we do to give them, I think it's five thousand dollars.
Yeah, it is.
So it's an agreement with them. Why does, why does it have to be in a court order? I guess I'm not following that.
I think it's in a statute.
Is it? Okay.
So that's what you sign. I don't know how to fill out this stuff. How do they, I can date that, but how do you fill out the top stuff on the court orders? Do you know, Kristen?
What?
They have terms and all this stuff. I'll figure it out. Yeah.
We're still on the January terms.
Okay, so you would then have to fill that out.
It's like other court orders.
Yes.
It is, okay, good, thanks. There's a letter.
I think we got to sign that one, too, I think. I think there's two copies there.
No, okay.
With statements coming up.
Jill, does your court order have the clerk's offices, anything on the backside?
There's attached by the clerk's office down there. This is just what Chelsea gave me.
Can you add an attachment to it or something, or?
Normally, there's a section on the back where it's certified by the clerk's office. It's a section he has to fill out. And the last one we did, did not have it on there. We're trying to find Debbie's original to get that certification approved.
Yeah, I should remember how we.
There's a test space.
There is on the other one as well, but on the back side, it's kind of like a notary kind of thing where I certify and test and.
Oh, the, the.
The whole thing, yes.
Rather than just the.
Yes.
Let's postpone it till next week till we can figure out what the heck it is because I haven't seen it. I don't, I don't remember seeing it at all, and I don't remember.
This, this is the annual agreement that we do with Soil and Water. We give them five thousand dollars. By statute, we are to contribute to them.
Yeah, I think that was the only one we kind of kept.
Correct.
From expenditures we used.
We didn't have.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, yeah. Well, that's why I said we kept, that's why we kept it.
Also, too, the Extension Center, there's a statute for that, too.
Yeah.
Well, there's a statute for both of those, but it doesn't really say how much you have to give either one.
No, it doesn't. I don't think it's a set amount.
I think the Extension Center has minimum ten thousand.
I mean, I, I think this is a standard agreement. It seems odd that it has to be a court order to me, but, I mean, but anyway, it is, it is what it is.
I've probably just done it for forty years that way.
That doesn't mean it's right.
I don't, you know, I don't know that it hurts.
I would guess at some point it wasn't in the budget originally, and it ended up being a court order to put it into the budget, and then it just stayed a court order.
That would make more sense.
So it probably could be just a memorandum of understanding or something to that effect, but that probably is how it originated, and it just kind of stayed that way.
I'm not saying I didn't get an email, you know, with it in there, but I don't remember seeing it, so that's why I was like, I don't know where this came from.
You probably didn't, Jeff, so.
No.
Because I don't think with that, anybody could.
This was the amount that we've always put in the budget for Soil and Water, though.
It's in the budget. I'm fine with that. I just, it gets thrown up there. The other ones have attachments we can look at and then see it, so.
I didn't know we had the attachment. I definitely.
You want to look at it? You want to wait? I mean, I mean.
Chelsea just gave it to me.
I'd hate for Pee-wee to hit you up that you voted against the Soil and Water District and the Levy District.
Why y'all picking on me?
I'm picking on someone.
Every once in a while, you get a bad.
It's just a contract, so that's exactly. Oh, frickin' target on it? I was in get-along mood. I was like, one plus one equals five. I'm fine with that. I think it equals seven.
Not going to let you do any more bad for me.
We need to see next year.
You didn't say that when you asked us here.
Just make a contract out of it next year, so I'm fine. Just get it done.
I move that we sign the court order for the Soil and Water Conservation District.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. What else you got, Mr. Jeff?
Do you want to talk about legislative stuff? Jeff?
Uh, about.
Uh, just how we were, how we were handling some of that and.
Well, yeah, I mean, you've been talking to.
Yeah, I mean, anytime somebody's said, had something, I just forward it on to our legislative team and just let them know whether to oppose or, you know, support or whatever that may be.
I didn't know if you wanted to continue to handle that or if we want to send it, and Jill can keep in with them on the legal side of it, watching it for us. I know she mentioned one the other day about the medical care for inmates and stuff, and then Sheriff mentioned that, too. So who we want leading that, what going up to his victory group and letting them know.
Yeah, a lot of times if Jill responds or whatever, I just have had her include Tom, Tommy on fiscal note or whatever, and so that they kind of.
I said to Tommy this morning and said, this is a big bill, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're doing a better job this year of.
I think so, too.
Yeah, I think it's a.
Anyway, but it's just kind of a process so that it's not redundant, I think, is your concern that they're not getting.
Yeah, because I can email it to them, too. Do you want us to all reply to you saying, get this to Tommy?
I mean, obviously, I can forward that. I mean, I think it's important that if Jill does a fiscal note on something that, that they kind of know the reasoning behind it, too. So sometimes I'll just send it to Jill and say, hey, can you forward to Tommy, too, so that's not.
I can give the explanation to him why this is a problem. That's kind of why, when I respond.
Most of the time, when we get that fiscal note, it's just because the bill's just been filed and.
We will, or sometimes if it's been referred out of committee, I mean, you'll have the different versions. After it's been voted out of committee, it may be amended, and then it's sent over to the other side. So if it progresses, you'll get those versions, too.
Sure.
Yeah, there's some specific ones that we want to watch that are different from what maybe Mac watches as much. Or, you know, we got HBA's, got theirs, Lord of the Angels got theirs, so several of them.
Well, if I see something that I think that we'll have a problem with, I would forward it to you guys. So if you want to let me know, yeah, we agree this is a problem, then I can send it on to Tom.
Right. Yeah, I think it's been working well so far.
Yeah.
So, anyway, I mean, you guys send something on it, I just forward it to Tommy or send it to Jill and.
Reply, yeah.
Right. Or I'll include Jill on, on an email that I send over to Tom, so just so that we're not hitting them multiple times, so.
Okay.
Trying to keep everybody in the loop.
A lot of stupid bills out there this.
Oh, yeah.
There's a lot of stupid down the street.
You can throw punches for free. I like free stuff. Take it out on somebody.
Okay, you guys got anything else?
Yeah, I got the Cole County MU Extension twenty eighteen Annual Report that I'd need. Somebody wants to look at it, otherwise I'm going to give it to Lynn. Got a thing from Ameren, Upcoming Vegetation Activities Notification, and they send this out to let us know that they're going to manage the vegetation along and under our transmission lines to prevent trees from contacting the wires. So that's just, then we've got, this came from the Historical Society of Missouri. It's the bicentennial of Missouri in twenty twenty-one, but, and then this was their newsletter. And they're doing a Missouri Bicentennial Quilt, which is a collaborative project of the State Historical Society of Missouri and the Missouri Star Quilt Company. They want submissions from each county due before September second. Individual quilters and quilting organizations are encouraged to submit blocks expressing the unique characteristics of Missouri culture and style. Submission should be six and a half inches squares, as blocks will be finished at six by six inches. Hundred percent cotton, description of the block and its significance to Missouri must accompany each submission. So they want Cole County to do a quilt block, what it comes down to for the Missouri quilt.
So are you working on that, or are you working on that, or you got a quilters group working on that?
I have a quilters group working on a bicentennial quilt for Cole County. But this is the first I just received, so, you know, probably, News Tribune will put it in their paper, and we'll get all these different church quilting groups and all these other quilting groups to submit blocks to us.
So every quilting group can submit a block?
Uh-huh.
Six inches by six inches?
Six and a half by six and a half. Actually, if we get enough, we could do another quilt for ourselves. Anyway, that's all I've got. I need them back because I've got, we've got our meeting Thursday, so you can.
I'll give them to you.
Yeah. Take, yeah, and bring them back. That's all I've got.
Okay, we got closed session, I guess?
Yep.
All right. Anything else?
Yes.
I just sent the email to you earlier. We just got approval for the thirty thousand dollar grant to put in the outdoor warning system at Eugene. So the paper's here. I have to be on, on next Tuesday, so we can get you to sign it.
Okay.
Through.
Yeah.
See you.
Better give me a copy first.
You're good, Bill. That's why you can't retire. We got, we're going to get one of those fifty mile an hour hover rounds for you.
Okay. Maybe we go into closed session pursuant to Section six, ten, point oh two one of the Revised Statutes of Missouri for Personnel Issues, Sub thirteen.
Second.
Cole. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.